Okay, Marie. Settle down, settle down.
She's here ten seconds already causing problems.
Before we begin, Administrator LaRae would like to say something.
I'm seeing, as you notice, that the chair in the middle of the dais of here is being left vacant tonight as the American flag draped over it in honor of the untimely passing of Mayor Giuliani. So we will, you know, leave this chair vacant tonight and the deputy mayor will act in this chair tonight and run the meeting.
Thank you very much. Good evening, welcome to the Township Lacy Caucus Meeting, March tenth, two thousand twenty-two. We'll start the adjourned notice of this meeting given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to public laws nineteen seventy-five. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. We'll start with Senator Flack.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have little one request to use Bayfront Park for memorial ceremony, April twelfth.
We have a resident in town who had lost a cousin last April and they're looking to have a memorial anniversary on April twelfth at Bayfront Park at seven, seven-thirty around sunset, be a candlelight vigil. I spoke with the Public Works Department and I spoke with the Police Department and they're all on board with this and the chief will have one of his specials in the area to make sure everything runs smoothly that evening. So I was just looking for permission.
Move it.
Second. All favor.
Aye.
And that's all I have on this agenda. I don't believe we have anything else to add on to this agenda.
Nope.
Motion to adjourn?
Move it.
Second.
Second.
Aye.
Good evening, welcome to the Township Lacy Council Meeting, March tenth, two thousand twenty-two. Adjourned notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to public laws nineteen seventy-five. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. We'll start with Senator Flack in honor of deceased Mayor Giuliani.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, I have a request of all here. It comes to my attention that the public out there is having a problem hearing us on the pickup, so make sure you speak into your microphones.
If you listen to it off of YouTube, it just sounds perfectly fine. It's when it's coming in through personal people's TVs. I don't have any issues with my audio. I will be looking into trying to do some upgrades with the audio this year, but it is fine off of YouTube and Tom has verified that as well.
Let's try and speak into our microphones.
Let's just blame Comcast. Blame them for everything else.
Deputy Mayor, if I may, I spoke with Administrator LaRae, it was sometime last year because this came up. Somebody wrote a note to us and you had said that these things have been adjusted and serviced, so.
I'm gonna look for some upgrades because underneath the dais here.
Your microphone is at least two feet away.
Got you, I got a dual-zone climate control.
Like I said, some of the wiring and equipment that's underneath the dais is very, very old, so I will be investing some money to upgrade it.
Money?
Yes, money.
There we go, there we go.
All right. Item number one, first reading ordinance twenty twenty-two dash oh six, authorizing the acquisition of block twenty-four thirty-four, lots thirty-nine and forty as a property donation.
In order to the Township Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the acquisition of block twenty-four thirty-four, lots thirty-nine and forty from Anthony and Victoria Beauty in accordance with NJSA forty-eight, twelve, dash five, A one. This is being donated to the Township Lacy. It is a parcel, forty by a hundred parcel west of the Garden State Parkway. They received it in a newspaper subscription back in the nineteen thirties because they were trying to get people to come down from North Jersey. So the family obviously is no longer interested in it. All the fees, the title searches, et cetera, that were done have been paid for by the current property and the township has no money invested in this at all. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald? Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes. Item number two, second reading ordinance twenty twenty-two dash oh four, authorizing the purchase of block eighteen fifty-three, lots twenty-six through twenty-nine to Kevin Barra.
In order to the Township Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the plot, the purchase of block eighteen fifty-three, lots twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, which is on Newark Avenue North pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, twelve, dash five. We are going through forward with our phase three of the Walters Development Apartments over here off of Calvin Street. We are purchasing up the lots and blocks in block eighteen fifty-two and eighteen fifty-three. This is one of those parcels. It is being paid for out of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. It's not being paid for out of your tax dollars. The purchase price being offered to this young man is seventy-two thousand dollars.
Second reading, open the floor to public comment.
See, now make a motion to close it.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Motion under the ordinance.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes. Item number three, second reading ordinance twenty twenty-two dash oh five, authorizing the purchase of various parcels from James Downmire.
In order to the Township Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the purchase of a property pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, twelve, dash five. This is block eighteen fifty-two, lots twenty-three, twenty-three, and twenty-six and twenty-seven. Block eighteen fifty-three, lots eighteen and nineteen, lots twenty-four and twenty-five. Some of these are on a paved roadway, so they could be considered buildable with a variance. So the total acquisition of this from Mr. Downmire is a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars.
Second reading, open the floor to public comment.
See, now make a motion to close it.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Motion under the ordinance, please.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes. Item number four, residents in twenty twenty-two dash ninety-seven, authorizing the appointment of a police chaplain.
Resolution to Township Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, appointing a police chaplain. As you know, a couple months ago, we had created the police chaplain program. This is a non-paying volunteer serving position when we need to call in chaplains to help some of our officers and even members of the public through some serious situations that may occur. We are appointing the chaplain from the forgiver Presbyterian Church and it's Paul Cueto, Cueto. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes. Item number five, resolution twenty twenty-two dash ninety-eight, supporting Senate Bill S twelve hundred, which limits the duration of a state of emergency.
Resolution to Township Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, in support of Senate Bill S twelve hundred, would limit the duration of a state of, the state of emergency. I'm not sure if any of you has followed this, but Senate Bill S twelve hundred will limit durations of a state of emergency sixty days unless an extension of said emergency is approved by the legislature. Currently, a state of emergency can continue until terminated by the governor and a public health emergency can be instituted thirty days with subsequent thirty days extensions. As we all know, that's what we've been going through. But this bill would limit the emergency to sixty total days, which includes the initial thirty and one, one-time thirty-day renewal unless the legislature states differently.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
I hope it passes. Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes. Item number six, resolution twenty twenty-two dash ninety-nine, authorizing a shared service with the County of Ocean for traffic signal generator bypass installation.
Resolution to Township Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing a shared service agreement with the County of Ocean for traffic signal generator bypass installations. This will be on six of our traffic lights. The County of Ocean will be installing some bypass switches and what will happen is when the power goes out, it's going to be for an extended amount of time. Instead of putting a police officer in the middle of the intersection to direct the traffic, we would come and take one of the generators out of storage, bring it over there, the county would hook it up and it would work just like if the power was on. So this will make it safer for the residents and safer for our police officers and the police officers can focus on other functions.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes. Item number seven, resolution twenty twenty-two dash one hundred, authorizing a place-to-place and person-to-person transfer of a retail consumption license.
Resolution to Township Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing and approving a person-to-person and place-to-place transfer of liquor license fifteen, twelve, thirty-three, zero, zero, two, zero, one, four to Pine Tar Bar and Grill. And this is where, it's an inactive license right now known as a pocket license, which was the former Charlie Brown's, which did get transferred back to the old corporation of T E F and G and now it is being transferred to the Pine Tar Bar and Grill. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes, congratulations to the two of you all. Item number eight, resolution twenty twenty-two dash one oh one, authorizing a change order to the contract with Earl Asphol for Capstan Drive.
Resolution to Township Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing execution of amendment to the contract with Earl Asphol Company for the Capstan Drive Road Improvement Project. This is a final change order number one, also known as final quantities. The decrease in this contract price is eighteen thousand, five hundred and nineteen dollars and ninety-five cents. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes. Item number nine, resolution twenty twenty-two dash one oh two, authorizing a change order to the contract with Earl Asphol to the Nautilus Boulevard.
Resolution to Township Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the execution of amendment to the contract with Earl Asphol for the Nautilus Boulevard Road Improvement Projects. This is also a decrease in the original contract price in the amount of thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars and ninety cents. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor, and Mr. Dykoff?
Yes. Item number ten, resolution twenty twenty-two one oh three, authorizing a change order to the contract with Earl Asphol for Michelle Court.
Resolution to Township Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the execution of amendment to the contract with Earl Asphol Company for the Michelle Court Road Improvement Projects. Again, it's another decrease in the amount of one thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars and forty-one cents. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes. Item number eleven, resolution twenty twenty-two dash one oh four, authorizing a change order for Earl Asphol to the community center site improvements.
Resolution to Township Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing execution of amendment to the contract with Earl Asphol Company for the former Knights of Columbus Building Site Improvement Project. This unfortunately is an increase in the amount of seventeen thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes. Item number twelve, resolution twenty twenty-two dash one oh five, authorizing the release of the deposit bond posted by Earl Asphol to the community center site improvements.
Resolution to Township Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the release of a site improvement performance guarantee posted by Earl Asphol Company for the former Knights of Columbus Building Site Improvement Project upon the posting of a maintenance guarantee. This maintenance guarantee will stay in place for one year.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes. Item number thirteen, resolution twenty twenty-two dash one oh six, authorizing the lease of maintenance bond for Lacy Family Apartments Phase Two.
Resolution to Township Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the release of a maintenance bond for the Lacy Family Apartments Phase Two to Walters Development Group. This has met its two-year project maintenance bond point. It expired on February eighth of two thousand twenty-two. All of the public improvements have withheld the two-year maintenance period.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes. Item number fourteen, resolution twenty twenty-two dash one oh seven, authorizing the refund of deposit money.
Resolution to Township Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes. Item number fifteen, resolution twenty twenty-two dash one oh eight, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution to Township Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of seven million, four hundred and fifty-one thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Nothing to abstain?
I'll stand, I don't have the number here in front of me.
D zero four hundred.
I'm gonna stand on D zero four hundred.
Item number sixteen, monthly reports.
All right. Must have fell out of your book. I'll make sure to get another sticky in there for you.
Yeah, please.
And municipal clerk for the month of February collected receipts in the amount of nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars and eighteen cents. We've had quite an influx in rentals at Community Hall and of course the parks are starting to get into heavy action for the upcoming warmer months. Road opening permits from the Public Works Department were collected in the amount of four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty cents. Recycling commodity was collected in the amount of nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Motion to accept the reports is read?
Move it.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Item number seventeen, motion to approve caucus meeting minutes of February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two.
Move it.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Item number eighteen, motion to approve council meeting minutes of February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two.
Move it.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Item number nineteen, motion to approve a rap license for the Rotary Club of Forker River, Lacy Ellis Lodge Twenty-five eighteen, and Seroptimist International of LBI.
Move it.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Any add-ons?
No, I have no add-ons today.
For the Council Committee, Mr. Curatolo, please.
Thank you so much. Again, as we all have, I want to eulogize our mayor, Nick Giuliani, one more time and just the outpouring of love and affection that the town has shown him and the police, fire, EMS, or DPW, everyone that helped in that really, if a somber situation like that could be spectacular, those folks and the Giuliani family made it spectacular. So, you know, it's just, it's just an awful, awful loss. And I loved it, I loved the dude. I call him a dude because, you know, you know what Nick would have never been good at? Some woke training at a Fortune five-hundred company and proper pronoun use. He wouldn't have been too good at that. That's why I loved him. So, moving on, I want to congratulate our new business owner. It's great when that happens in our town, it's a nice location and we want to welcome you, as our deputy mayor said, it's very appropriate. You're very welcome. I want, I think I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize our ninth legislative district. At three-thirty in the afternoon on March eighth, we received an email on proposed legislative package of bills, just having superb advocacy for our town with regard, specific regard to taxation issues and, you know, for our ninth legislative district to do that for us, we've grown to expect it, that they have a great many municipalities that they oversee. So these were well-written, well-thought-out and I'm hopeful that they pass because it would really be a nice shot in the arm for us. I want to thank Skip Peters from the school board in closing, that what he did for our businesses and what anyone who had involvement over there, superintendent at the Elks, there were several hundred people, again, a boost for our businesses in the Taste of Lacy presentation for vocational technical school there. People got to sample different food items without having to go out to the restaurant. So there was many, many restaurants there and again, it was well-written up on Facebook and it was enjoyed by all. That's all that I have, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Kennis, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I also would like to, you know, give my public comments regarding Nick. I would like to express my deep sorrow and consolences to the Giuliani family. The speed with which this happened is surprising to all of us. Nick was a well-meaning, good human being who never put himself above the people he worked with and always gave credit to others. Nick was a true member of the community, who always showed up and supported many clubs and organizations and he always tried to make the best decisions on behalf of all the parties involved. I would truly miss him both personally and professionally. Those are my comments, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Mr. McDonald?
Backing up, Deputy Mayor. I too would talk about Nick. He's gonna be sorely missed. He was a quiet man, but when he spoke, you listened to him because a lot of times he made a whole lot of sense. And, and he, as I said the other night, when he spoke about this town, he had a twinkle in his eye. He absolutely loved this town, a successful businessman, but again, when he talked about his family, it was, the sparkle just sparkled even more. And he will be missed, but never forgotten, that's for sure. I too want to talk about what came out of the ninth district, those two emails that we got, and I'm gonna make a recommendation that we do something in support of those two emails, particularly the one, well, both of them with the energy tax receipts that we, we, I don't think we do a resolution because I don't think it does anything. I think we have Veronica draft an email and send it to everybody up there in the Assembly and in the Senate and to Governor Murphy on behalf of all of us, because I got a funny feeling that these emails, the resolutions, they probably get a million of them, they throw them, throw them away, but the emails, I think somebody reads them and has to respond to them. So I think that's what we do. If we want to do a resolution, that's fine, and I want to do a resolution on the second bill, which is, which is what Senator Connors has always talked about, is the taxation and the ability for us to do some things down at the power plant. I think that is paramount, that we, we got to board on that and we get the rest of the state on board on that. Chris, let me just ask you a quick question. Both of those bills that come out of the Senate?
You're talking about the energy tax receipt. That came out of the Senate.
And where's the sitting assembly?
It should be ready for second reading, floor vote, yes, aye.
Okay, what about the other one with the power plant?
Power plant's in the Senate Community and Urban Affairs Committee, which I'm a ranking member, so I'm trying to get the chairman to post the bills and get them released from the committee.
Whatever you need from us to do to help push that out, I believe this committee would be one-hundred percent behind us. The other thing I do want to talk about is Saturday and Friday night, our police did an outstanding job in honor of Mayor Giuliani while shutting down Nine and Lacy Road. And they always do that, and I do want to talk about them a little bit tonight because somebody sent me a text today, this is the first normal work week in two years. Okay, I'll buy that. But over those two years where our police were under the gun, everything was magnified. I don't think we had one, well, we had one major incident with regards to masks and things like that. Our police handled that as professionally as possible. They did, and I have had many conversations with the chief, and yes, they were under, they were under the gun, a lot of pressure on them, talked to the chief, he, he was exacerbated by it because every time we turned around, there were new rules coming out of Trenton, particularly the governor's office, what we couldn't, what he couldn't, couldn't do. And it put a big straight up, but we came through this in flying colors, there's no question about that. So I do, so I do want to commend them on that. Deputy Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you. Under reverse, I already talked about, a little bit about the bills that Senator Connors and the legislature had sponsored, been on the floor, talking about them. So, in a little bit of explanation, the first bill is to restore the energy receipt tax to the original amount. There was a time when that money came directly to the township, but it was in round figures of seventeen million dollars. And then the state of New Jersey had this great idea that they would be a donor group and little by little they chipped away. So every year, we waited, we waited and waited. You know, other municipalities get state aid, we never got state aid. That was our state aid. So they chipped away, chipped away, and I guess we're about eleven point two or eleven or...
We're eleven point one, but over those years since they started dipping into it and taking the money from us, they took seventy-three million dollars from us.
So basically, that's what, that's it. And it's all about timing. There was, you know, for many years, we discussed this with the ninth district legislators, probably with Senator Connors' father, Len. And, you know, just, you know, unfortunately, as a Republican town, Republican legislation, it's very hard to get something through the legislation, but as, you know, more and more noise, a lot of municipalities, and it's been pretty noisy, and I pay attention from the league of municipalities, that, you know, this is a way for all municipalities to get some state aid, not just the academic districts and so on and so forth. So, and thank you for that. The other, the other bill that's being discussed, and this is something that, again, Senator Connors and I have discussed for many years, is how do we get some post-community funds for storing the nuclear waste, which as much as we like to think is not going anywhere for a long time. So what's basically happened with that is, as, as most people are aware, we have one of the oldest power plants in the United States. So it wasn't a big deal and there have been municipalities who had proposed, or states, rather, who have proposed legislation, Stranding Nuclear Waste Act and so on and so forth, but it never got much trade. Well, what, what, what the ninth district legislators are doing is trying to get some post-community funds or having those spent fuel cash taxed, for basically they are stationary units. I guess, you know, the, the definition is something with a footing. You have a sign on your property, that's taxable. So, thank you very much for that and, you know, if that comes to fruition, this helps us also with the ever-repeating tax appeals that we do receive from the, from then Exelon and now, of course, all that. Nick. So, I've gotten a lot of, talk about me first, I've gotten a lot of good compliments from my life. Probably the, my favorite compliment is that I'm a good man. When I'm thinking Nick, that's all I think about, is good man. I mean, he was a good man because he cared about the town like you couldn't believe, like everyone else said. He listened, you know, if you, if you saw the, the weight and you saw the, the progression, procession, and you saw our club meeting, pub and club meeting the other night, you saw all of our township workers, not all, but a large percentage, emergency services, whether it be ambulance, fire, police, and sometimes they're a little to themselves, the emergency services, because they're a family. You know, the police should call, a blue family, red family, you know, they're, it's a brotherhood. And Nick was able to endear himself to that brotherhood because he listened. And Nick was able to endear himself to that brotherhood, because he listened. And as Committee Man McDonald said, didn't say a lot sometimes, but he listened, and when he had something to say, he'd just say it for the sake of saying it. And then, of course, his family. I know Nick, I probably know Nick longer than any of you here, because Nick and I have family relationships. I've known Nick over thirty years, probably almost forty years, if I think about it. And we knew each other's families, and of course, it goes along with his wife. And I've seen him progress, and I remember when he started to come up in this township first as a member of the MUA, and he was so proud to be part of that MUA, and then, of course, as a township comedian, and we will be sholied in this. You know, I don't know what else to say, as Fordham said, Nick will miss you. Thank you. With that, open the floor to public comment. Anyone?
I have Notre Dame due this afternoon.
I don't know.
What? They're playing the Big East with them.
Yeah, you're right. You're right.
Joe Brant, 413 Amber, missed away. Good evening, Committee Men, Counsel, Administrator. Two things, if I may. One is, the Seabreeze community joins with the committee and the town in supporting the morning of the passing of our mayor. We had our flags at half-staff all weekend, from Thursday through Sunday, and I know there was a nice turnout from our community during the service, so we miss him, dear. The second thing, on Tuesday night at the Republican Club, there was some mention of a methadone dispensing about to happen, or in the process of happening, and I know Committee Man Curatolo spoke, and Administrator LaRae. I'm just wondering if he could give us a little more discussion about what this is and how our hands are tied, and if it's a fait accompli that cannot be dealt with.
Well, maybe, you know, a little bit, I understand. So, we have a zoning, we have zoning ordinances in the municipality, and what used to be there was a medical clinic. Well, this is not a dispensary, it's a methadone clinic, and do they dispense methadone? I mean, yes, they do, just like any, any clinic would dispense. So it's allowable use, and, and I, when this first started to happen, and of course, we were notified, and we looked at what we can and couldn't do, and of course, we, our hands are tied, but I thought about this a little bit. It's no secret that we have a opiate heroin problem, not only in Fork River, Ocean County, Burden County, all over. It's a problem. I don't know if it's not a secret, but we had a suspected overdose last night at Puffy Wallace Park. We're not sure what it was, but, you know, if this stigmatism attacks us on something like that, I think is a little unfounded, in my opinion. Could be wrong, and the proof will be in the pudding, but you can be sure that, as was mentioned the other night, our police department will be ever diligent, just like, you know, we have zoned medicinal marijuana in the business park, just like there, just like, you know, any type of facility where, you know, whether it be liquor, or, you know, not, not particular anymore, but, so that's it, so our hands are tied. The question, and I didn't understand this, and that was brought up, is it's near a school. Well, it's near the education academy, but it's a private school. Is there some ordinance, and I know from other, hearing other places, near a public school, and we all know that if you distribute drugs within some repeat of a public school, the penalties go up. That's something we'll research, but right now, unfortunately, we can't get to the fact, once an applicant, application is made, this, you can't go back. We'll just keep an eye on it, and you can trust that, you know, we'll, our police force will make sure, and we will make sure that we do the best we can.
One last, one last question. What other towns are distributing methadone?
I know Bricktown.
Bayville, Ware Town?
Bricktown.
Yeah, Ware Town has one, Bayville has one.
They do.
Yeah.
Just, Deputy Mayor, you weren't aware of this, but tonight, I had talked with Senator Connors, and I did ask him to research, because in the proposed marijuana laws that were coming through, there was, it had to be 2,000 feet away from a school. So I've asked him to research whether the state has those regulations, and I did mention that it is a private school, so whether it's a, whether it's just in public schools or private schools, they're not open yet, so, and that, they've been built out for about a year and a half now, two years. So, my understanding is there's a problem with this license. So, maybe, maybe we're not too late for this, if that regulation is in place. Whether it is or isn't, we don't, I don't know.
Committee Men? Yeah, if I could, Joe, I've done, I'm about fifteen years into public health, I was many years in the drug and alcohol unit, and I've been all around different departments in public health, both here in Florida. And what I could tell you is, when rehab is court-ordered, it's not that successful, because somebody's kind of, got to want to be in recovery and get clean. The folks go in there, took the step to not only generally speaking, go to counseling, but they also saw a physician that prescribed that stuff. Yes, it's a synthetic opiate, opiate, but those folks are, and I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna defend this new proposed licensee and prop it up, I'm gonna be neutral about it. Those folks that are going there don't want to be wasted anymore. They want to be participants in their, in their recovery, or else they wouldn't be going there. They wouldn't have gone to a counselor, they wouldn't have gone to a doctor, get the prescription to go there and get the methadone. They're highly monitored. So, is it, is it a perfect medicinal, you know, a way to titrate down? I'm not sure, I'm not a physician, and I always say that, but it's what we have, it's what's FDA-approved, and I've spoken to our chief, I saw our chief earlier today for lunch, he is gonna be on this, because he's vested in this. You know, he's a guy that does not just do enforcement, he's brought these programs over here, Blue Heart, have a counselor at the police department. Now, we're arresting fewer people, because really, what it is, is a mental health call. So now, those people are getting a treatment, so we have fewer calls going out, spending less of all of our money. So some of this is working, we're starting to build inroads. He's invested in it, but if he has to drop a hammer, he's gonna do it, because I know he talks to Mark, I know he talks to everyone, sorry, Deputy Mayor Dykoff, and everyone else up here. So, we're gonna monitor, all right? Nothing's gonna get by.
Appreciate the fuller conversation.
I just want to add how the zoning building process works, too. Many times, that stuff doesn't cross our desk, so when, on the zoning, if somebody just goes in, it's, you know, they apply for a zoning permit, if it's allowed use, they